What's this fiance's name? Frisia? Yes.
Right, okay. So I was thinking about it. I called her the second night. Somebody on the other end. And so I don't know what it was. Right.
Welcome everybody to city council meeting for Monday, October the 8th. If we could have a roll call please to establish form.
Bob Thomas?
Here.
Melissa Green?
I'm here.
Terry McLung?
I'm here.
Mickey Schneider?
Here.
Tom Buford?
Here.
We have five.
All right, will you stand and cite the flag of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Anybody got any problem thing? All right, all those in favor of the agenda is presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Get a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, additions? Hearing done, all those in favor of the minutes is submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. That brings us to our commission committees report. We've got some vacancies. I guess also I should note if you've got a cellphone, you might want to turn it off if you would, please. We've got a couple vacancies on the planning commission. Also have one on the CAPC. And we have one on the, actually, we have two on the hospital. We've got a vote tonight on Dr. Baronic's application before you. And there's another application by Mark Tozio in your files for consideration of the next time.
Okay.
So, we got any questions or?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, Dr. Baronic.
Baronic?
Yeah, Baronic.
I'll second that.
Good discussion. All right, hearing done, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. Cemetery commission, we've got two positions available there. So if anybody out there in TV land wants to roll up your sleeves and go to work, we've got several positions available. So come on down to the city hall. Public comments, please limit your discussion to three minutes. And I don't know who's first.
All right, this is Ferguson Stewart, 7 Harvey Road. And first off, I'd like to commend a decision you guys made by hiring the contractor for $25,000 to find those leaks. There's been at least three major leaks that have been found. Public Works, I believe, has worked to fix those. So pat yourselves on the back, that's going to be saving us a lot of money in water bills. So number two is, I want to remind you of what the quality of employees you've got on staff. The employees working for the city, either the fire department, police department, Public Works, are awesome. So we've got some very talented individuals. And I hate to lose them because we're paying so little. So one of the things I would, if you guys could do, is set aside a fund that those directors of those departments can draw from to keep those talented and skilled employees in case they get pulled away by Rogers and Fayetteville, which apparently are doing that quite a lot now. So that's all I've got, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Diane Murphy. I live in town here and also have a real estate company in town. I wanted to come tonight to speak in favor of the current CUP policy. So I know that's been under discussion a lot. I know that there's a conversation about it tonight. So both from a resident's perspective and from a realtor's perspective, I want to say, I think the policy works really well. I know there's been some things that have come up recently. I don't really know the origins of all that, but I think it's possible that the reason that there is some uncertainty about it is because it doesn't actually come into play all that often. I don't think it's some big giant issue. And I'm not really sure what we're trying to fix. I defend our policy a lot when dealing with buyers. It matters to protect our neighborhoods. I really, I value that we do that. And I think our policy enforces that. I think it matters that we get neighborhood input as part of it. I think that's super valuable. I also think it matters to keep in mind what the trends in tourism are. And Airbnb type rentals are across the country, a huge component of tourism. And I would hate to see us become more limited in a popular tourism market segment when tourism is our one and only industry. So I hope we don't limit it more. I personally think that everything that's played out, at least from what I'm reading in the paper, actually supports that the policies that we have in place have worked. So I just want to leave you with that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our public comments. Move in this resolution for Judge Ramsey's salary, motion to discuss?
So moved.
Second.
I think y'all have a, should have, a resolution, no wait. Okay, resolution for sharing Judge Ramsey's salary. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
To read, sign the number and read for approval?
Yeah, to read and sign in the number, that was more appropriate.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? Do we, oh, in favor or what?
Well, no, she, for discussion.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Just a simple question. I don't remember, how often does this happen?
Every year, I think.
For different judges or?
No, it's for the same amount. It's always the same.
But different judges, because I only remember-
No, last year was the first judge we had, Judge Ramsey.
Was it Ramsey?
Yeah.
Okay. So every year we're probably getting like a slight increase? Okay, thank you.
This is basically goes to the county and city budgets, what this is for.
Right.
So we're paying, you know, just a small share. Actually, we're paying less than what we did originally.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, we got a-
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. McLung?
Yes.
Ms. Schneider?
Yep.
Mr. Buford?
Yes.
Five zero. The resolution number will be 739. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to execute a proportionate share agreement for the state district court judgeship base salary for 2019. Date resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Mayor of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas is hereby authorized to execute a written proportionate share agreement to fund one half, 50% of the base salary of the district court judgeship for fiscal year 2019. The remaining base salary of the district court judgeship shall be paid by the state. The proportionate share agreement is equally divided among the following entities. Carroll County, two shares. Madison County, one share. City of Berryville, one share. City of Eureka Springs, one share. City of Huntsville, one share. And the city of Green Forest, one share. Each share shall be in the amount of $8,378.57 for the fiscal year 2019 among shareholders in this agreement.
All right.
Thank you.
That brings us to our next item, is a motion to discuss changing some of the code for animals.
So moved.
Second.
All right. This man, Ms. Schneider.
Since our meeting, our last meeting, when we approved various wordage to go to the city attorney for minor changes, some things have come to note. In regards to misrepresentations, in regards to untruths, complaints that never were, so on and so forth. And things got really ugly really fast. So we now have further changes to be added to what was there. And everybody has a worksheet in your paperwork there showing the one sheet of the changes, which before was just merely adding swine, changing hogs to swine. Now it's a combination of the two different sets being not only changing hogs to swine, but also being a listing of, for people with a pot-bellied pig, the various steps that they need to go through in order to keep the one they have right now and only the one they have right now. First of all, in regards to a pot-bellied pig, while this was true in the mid-'80s, it is no longer totally true because of the way the small breed pigs have been bred amongst each and all from countries all over the world, believe it or not. So the term, and so there are actually changes to the changes. So the term pot-bellied pig should be pot-bellied pig slash American mini pig, which is the term that is being used by the pig groups. I don't know what they're called.
Stick society.
A variety of groupings. And this encompasses all the different breeds that have been combined to make mini pigs. So that's one of the first things we have to remember. And I will probably continue calling them pot-bellied pigs because for me, that's what they have always been. Excuse me. North Little Rock has rewritten, or not rewritten, has changed their hog laws like we are talking about doing for ours. And to make them, you know, it's unlawful to have them within city limits, yada, yada. What they did was they added one paragraph to their code. And it reads, "This section does not apply to Vietnamese pot-bellied pigs," which in our case, to make it proper wording would be the American mini pig. Okay, this section does not apply to the mini pigs. "For the purpose of this section, the Vietnamese pot-bellied pig is to be considered a pet and subject to any and all laws that may apply to pets, including but not limited to restrictions on running at large." So knows what they're saying is follow your basic dog laws that you have and the city dogs will be leashed, so on and so forth. And like I said, we need to not use the Vietnamese, we need to use the American mini. But that's what they did, and that was Little Rock. Now there is, I've got stacks of papers here. I've got one set of papers that has over 200 towns that have rewritten, changed their laws to allow these pet pigs. So it's not as far-fetched as it may seem. I have in my collection here, seven letters from the neighbors of what I refer to as the Pig Lady. Seven letters from all of her immediate neighbors in a huge area in regards, and two of them are lodging people. Okay, you know, like B&amp;B type lodging, whatever. Everybody loves these pigs. These pigs go outside when the Pig Lady takes them out to do their little potty steps. She uses baking soda when they urinate to avoid any massive buildup. She, as soon as they are done with the other end, she immediately cleans that up, goes into the same kind of can that I had suggested in my first setup of guidelines that the Beres and I came up with. It covers all of that. There is no odor, there is no running loose because they're only outside when she's outside with them. They are house-trained. I spent an hour over there the other day. And if I was blind, I would think it was my two boxers bouncing around, not a pig. I'm not kidding, it could have been my boxers. So none of the neighbors have any problems whatsoever, never have had, and think that these things are absolutely awesome. I'm sorry, I've got so many notes included on here. Okay, what we, this is after working with police, animal control, city attorney, Pig Lady, and everything else, and tons of research. What we have come up with is, we don't want to have a city full of pigs running around. This is true. We also don't want to take anybody's pets away. Nobody wants to have their cat or their dog removed. And this would be basically discrimination because these are pets. So what we are suggesting is either do like Little Rock did and make a clause, you know, one extra clause to the ordinance stating that the no swine laws do not apply to the mini pigs, and these are the guidelines for having one, or we put in a sunset clause. Now the average age limit, or the time, you know, the years that a mini pig lives is 12 to 15 years. So we averaged it out to, we're saying, the year 2030. At which time, the pigs that are presently in town would have to be registered immediately with the city. Those pigs would have a sunset clause to 2030, at which time they probably would have passed on their own anyway. But that protects the ones that are still here, which actually was through bad usage of words and changes in the breeds. Therefore, we would like to see, like I said, either the clause from Little Rock stating it does not include the mini pigs, or if you want to restrict them, then we would do the sunset clause. American Mini Pig Rescue Group, good grief, these are for rescuing pigs. Mostly from towns who have thrown them out. Okay? This is huge in this country. Mini pigs do all kinds of stuff. They're called the mini pig heroes. And I've got a whole list of the ones that do it. And the one, of course, that got me was the mini pig hero named Bacon Bit, who detects seizures in his owner before it happens. And I don't know if it's the same one, or if we have another one, but we do have a mini pig living in this town that does that for his owner. Now it has been said with some of the main animal thing, that the mini pigs are not permitted on the list of, like, the work dogs, the service dogs. Although, yes, I have talked to people now, yes, it does work. But I'm not kidding, the research on this is unbelievable. You can put it in, boy, you better be ready. I'm not kidding, because there is so much of it. So we are asking that we change some of the wording that we approved at the last meeting for the city attorney to either put the restriction like North Little Rock did, or to put in the sunset clause. So we need to decide on that because his hands were kind of tied in regards to doing anything because the changes were all of a sudden incoming. So what we have is what we voted on last time. The habitat for no domesticated animals shall reside in any unoccupied residence or on any unoccupied property. That's what we had already agreed on in regards to like dogs and whatever. The no hogs should be changed to swine. And then add in, oh, and I have five things listed here to add if we want to make a guideline for keeping one. And I forgot number six, which is that they all must be neutered. I forgot to put that on there, so please add that as number six. Anybody, if we go with the sunset clause, then anybody with a pig, with one of the mini pigs, must immediately register with the city. And I give the guidelines for what's needed on that. If we go the other way, it's up to the council on if you want to have them registered or however, you know, with ACO, with the city. You know, those are the things we have to work out. But so these are the suggestions that have been made. And that's my part until you start discussing it.
Ms. Green?
Well, I talked with you, which, about this too. I would hate to take away someone's pet, and especially someone's pet who, I believe, the city, as our animal control officer, was aware of it. So it was left. But, and I just can't take somebody's pets away. I think Mickey did a good job. What, and I'm glad that the neighbors around there, that part is excellent. That they're happy and they're willing to work with it. I have had a number of calls that people just don't want any kind of pigs in the city. Is your sunset clause just for this, these, is there two pigs?
For the ones that are existing in town.
Two of them?
There's more, and we don't know how many more.
Oh, and other residents?
At any residence.
Okay, is there any more in town?
Yes.
Okay. So the ones that are in town, and they're pets, and obviously, they will be registered? And are we going to, is this going to allow more?
No. If you go with the sunset, the point is, anybody who now, right now, has a mini pig, they would get them registered with the city and have to agree to the 2030 sunset clause. If, and no new ones would be allowed in.
Okay.
They've got like one month and that would be it. After that, no, they would, any others would be illegal. If you go with the North Little Rock version, where they added a paragraph, then they all would, but they have to meet these six guidelines.
Right.
That we have in the animal.
Okay, so if we use your sunset one, we don't have to use the ones below.
Right.
Okay.
Those six points, right.
And number six in our code book, if the pigs kind of come under like a dog or cat, there's, I feel adequate things on, you know, the smell, the cleanup, you know, the invasiveness of a neighborhood, that would cover anything. So we probably wouldn't have to add these, other than-
You want to be safe rather than sorry.
You do want to add those.
Yes, you would.
Okay, all right.
Then you don't have to worry about anybody arguing.
Okay, well, then I don't have a problem with that.
Mr. Buford? You can call a pot-bellied pig a miniature pig, but they have to get to be a couple hundred pounds. So I mean, by saying that miniature doesn't-
I've got poundage, Mickey. Oh, I'm sorry.
They get big. New York City had an ordinance allowing, disallowing pigs. And somebody carried to the state supreme court. And there was a very long opinion by the judge. He finally said, you know, you can talk about what you want to, but a pig is still a pig, and they outlawed them. And they had to carry their pigs in animal sanctuary. It got so big in New York, they actually established one outside the city limits. And people would get caught by animal control guy and have to carry their pigs outside the city. They would drive on weekends to visit their pigs in this sanctuary outside the city. So it's, you know, I just don't think we need to have pigs in the city limits of Eureka Springs.
Mr. Thomas?
In 2030, if there's a little old lady pig still in town- Are the police going to escort her to the city limits?
Nobody's going to even remember.
How would that be handled?
Nobody's even going to remember him by then.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, I'm, you know.
Ms. Schneider?
Okay, in regards to poundage, that's one of the things, and I can't find the exact paper, I've got so many papers here. They have been coming down. They now average up to about 200 pounds. And this is after 24 generations of the breeding with a variety from like four different countries of the mini pigs. The average is like 160. There is one kind that is actually up to 300 max. But like I said, these are averages. When you figure that a hog that is being bred and raised for consumption hits 300, starts at 300 and hits 1,100, a couple hundreds not a real big deal, I don't think. But the biggest thing is, these guys are so smart, and they are, they can, and a lot of them have been potty trained to use a kitty litter, which to me is bizarre. But after watching these guys last week, yeah, I believe it. I'm not kidding, they were incredibly astute.
Ms. McLung?
Well, we already know that you can call them whatever you want. But mini pigs turn into maxi pigs. Or they don't?
200 pounds is not 1,100.
I don't know anybody raises hogs commercially that raises to 1,100 pounds.
It's one or two. Point B. Point B.
The thing is, if you set a precedent, then you're going to have pygmy goats, and you're going to have miniature horses, and it's all under the auspices of pets. So I understand what you're saying about, you know, that they were not treated fairly, or that's what you're trying to insinuate, that there was misrepresentation, that they could have them, I guess? I don't know, but-
Yeah.
But I too don't, I mean, I don't want, I don't want to spoil things for somebody. And I've spoken to the neighbors, and they said, you really can't tell that they're there. But, you know, it's, rules are rules.
That's why you have two options.
Ms. Green?
Well, when I moved here, there were some in town and nobody seemed to care. I mean, I can remember one being walked down the street. I, like I said, I don't want to take away anybody's pets. I think the ones that are here, Mickey's come up with some good regulations. And not, no more. I mean, I think a lot of people don't really want them in town. But I don't want to take away anybody's pet.
I think what, trying to bring this to a head, I think what we have is two questions that the council needs to decide. Is one, do we want to establish an ordinance that allows the two existing pigs to remain until 2030?
More than two, Mr. Mayor.
Whatever pigs, whatever, however many of that are in town, allow them to remain? Or to, that's question number one. And/or just allow them, any of them, to remain? So Mr. McLung?
I still have, no, I still have a comment on the discussion.
Well, Mr. McLung, I recognize Mr. McLung first, please, ma'am.
Do you think that there's a chance that these people would take these pigs underground and keep them here in town if we, I mean, there might be like 10 pigs, or 20 pigs, or just three little pigs, or, I don't know.
Absolutely, they're supposed to be registered if we're allowing, if we go by this. Uh, Ms. Schneider?
Okay, in response to Jerry's comments before about the mini horses, goats, and stuff, they didn't have the wordage problem that the word hog did, which is why the pot-bellied pigs, those people thought they were okay because they had checked and gone by guidelines from other cities that permitted them. So the word usage, like I said, that was an innocent error eon to go. Now, a mini goat is still a goat, which is still not allowed. But I had, when, years ago, before I switched to boxers, I had Great Danes. My Great Danes were 150 pounds. So an extra 50 pounds on a pig is no big deal to me, or to my husband. Because my Great Dane used to stand him off. And I think he weighed about 10 pounds more than Steve did. Point being, you don't go, you can't go by weight. You have to go by type, by congeniality, and these guys are very friendly. They're very smart, they're very astute. So like I said, it's either you, the council has to decide, and I'm in the middle on both of it, on both choices. We either allow and they get registered and follow guidelines, or we do a sunset. Anybody in town right now with mini pigs needs to get registered. And they are the ones who have to obey the sunset, and nobody else can bring pigs in. That's a decision that has to be made. And like I said, I'm right square in the middle on both of those.
All right, well, you want to make a motion?
Okay. Since I'm not seeing any leaning, one way or the other, except to do away, I will make a motion that on the animal law changes, we go with what we had at the last meeting, and we include the sunset clause in regards to pot-bellied pigs or any and all American mini pigs, using the year 2030 as the sunset date.
This is sunset clause. Is Dagby under?
Oh, I did.
Okay.
Sorry about that, I didn't realize that, yes.
All right, basically-
December 31st, by the way, I'm sorry. 12/31 of 2030.
Are you finished with your motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor of including a sunset clause for the quote pot-bellied pigs, signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Oh.
No. Mr. Thomas?
I vote aye.
Is it in favor, or against?
Sunset clause. Three, two. I'm in favor.
You're in favor? All right, I'll vote yes. Okay.
Four, two.
And I didn't think to ask before, do we need to include the guidelines for the ones, for the presently, right?
Yes.
Guidelines will be included?
That is-
Okay.
Um-
The six guidelines will be included. Okay.
Because we're still following the same-
The paper I get, the paper that you guys had in your package today.
I think we need a motion to include that, we didn't have that.
Okay.
My understanding.
I make a motion that-
All right. I'm looking at the clerk.
I think it's pretty clear.
That the motion includes the guidelines? I think we need a motion to include the guidelines, as added, one through-
One through six.
One through six.
Just make a new motion, Mickey. Should I make a new motion?
Yes, make a new motion.
Take that one back.
Okay, I make a motion to take back my motion.
No, there's no reason to do that.
No, go ahead, just add, just add the, you're adding the-
Okay.
Guidelines of one through six to be included.
To include numbers one through six of-
That's fine.
The guidelines for having a mini pig through until the sunset date.
All right. Give a second?
I'll second that.
All right, discussion? Okay, all in favor of the guidelines, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All those?
I said aye.
I think that's four one.
Four one?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, okay. That takes care of, takes care of the pigs for the night.
They're in the blanket now, are they?
Yeah.
Pig in the blanket, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so let's bring up discussion of safety signs in residential areas. Get a motion to discuss.
So moved.
Give a second?
Second, sorry.
All right, Ms. Green?
Okay, last, last week we had, Mr. Burns was here with a lot of things, and I've had other people on East Mountain about speed limit signs, and, you know, there's, there's some problems up there. But the other thing why I wanted to bring this up is, one of our biggest things we're talking about is ecotourism now, and we're doing all these trails, we're inviting people to hike and bike, so along with maybe some speed limit signs, I would like to see maybe some signs put up, watch for hikers and bikers, I mean, I know our roads are too narrow to make, you know, biking or hiking lane, but I think I would like to put up these signs as a safety measure to encourage that for this town, because I think our town does that, I think, you know, we have these walking tours, and we, and we want people to walk and hike, and even bike, so that's why I put it on the agenda.
Any further discussion? I will talk it over with Public Works and Parks tomorrow, and I'm sure we can get something going on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Basically, administrative issue.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No problem. All right, discussion of lighting.
So moved, second?
All right, Ms. Green?
That was brought up last week, and I put it on the agenda because there were citizens here talking about it. It's since come to my attention that isn't most of it the electrical companies that do that, or?
Well, there were some, the people that were talking about the issue of not having lighting, the lighting not working in Eureka Springs, and I think they mentioned 28 lights, and out of that 22 of those light fixtures were on the boardwalk along Spring Street between Basin Park and Main Street, those little bitty, basically carriage lights.
Okay.
We'd been working for, I don't know, over a year trying to find the shorts, because that's short circuited, and we finally got that taken care of, and the lights are all fixed, although he did point out that we missed one light on the other side of the stairs of Basin Street, which is in between Resbeck Gifts and the Chocolate Factory. The lights at the museum that was referenced belongs to the museum, I couldn't get any information on the streetlights, and the streetlights are all APNL, or SREPCO, or Carroll Electric. And if somebody has an issue with one of those lights, as one of our council members did, they'll call me, they will come out and take care of it and check it, all I need is some streetlight numbers, that's their responsibility. So.
I can appreciate Mr. Mayor taking the time to listen to this and explaining things. Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, that brings us up, number five, discussion of bringing to the people a vote on the conditional uses.
So moved?
Moved to-
Motion to discuss.
Give a second?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Green?
Okay. I have been dealing with this for over two and a half years with, with planning and now on city council, and it's, it's divided in half, there, there are, half the people are saying, get rid of them, we don't want them, there's too much lodging, there's too much of this, but, and half of them, just like the lady that came in tonight, want them, so there's, there's not an easy answer. And of course, there's a letter in there saying that I didn't do what I was supposed to do last week, well, I'm gonna say this, those are the codes that have been here since I moved here, I've used those codes for seven years in planning, I don't remember being sued on any of them, whether I denied it or accepted it, I don't believe Tim has ever told me I was doing wrong. So I think what we did last week is we did what was right, and we did it by the book, and they met their conditions. But just for some information, in the last two and a half years in R1, Washington Street was our last CUP that was issued. Since then, we have lost Inn at Rose Hall, Chantilly Lace, Journeys Inn, The Veranda, JR's Hideaway, and Kirk Street, a total of six properties with cups, 19 units. Now, in R2, we've added four in the last two and a half years, two out on Pivot Rock, one was connected with Tall Pines, one on Thomas last week, and one on Richard's, so we've, a total of four properties and four units. So we're losing more than we're really gaining, but it's, it's been such a hot topic, and planning is working on it now, they are working on a plan map, kind of marking out where all the lodging is, both commercial and the conditional uses and the grandfathers. And they've had a couple of workshops, and I, I don't know what the answer is, I, I'm tired of being beat up, you know, for either denying them or giving them, I, I don't know if it's an issue. So, you know, my only answer, because like I said, I brought up, I was on planning with Mr. Buford, and we brought up recommendations that were stricter and more limited, and the council, the majority of the council didn't like them and voted them down, we put a moratorium on, and that was also voted down. So I just don't know what the answer, I, I thought maybe let's bring it to a vote, maybe send it back to planning, see if they can maybe come up with something, I, I would like some advice.
One of the comments was that the moratorium was on bed and breakfast, not on overnight lodging.
Okay.
Yeah.
Not on CUPs.
Yeah, not on CUPs, so, anyway, any further discussion?
Well, I don't, I don't think, you know, when you say every, half the people want this, and half the people want that, you may have heard from 50 people that want something and 50 that don't, there's 2,000 people in town. I don't think we can make decisions based upon who comes and yells the loudest, you know, or who sends out the most emails, that's not the way a city government should operate. And I don't think we should just wring our hands and give up because we're hearing from people on both sides.
Mr. Buford?
It has come before, planning is, as the Green mentioned, we talked about, I think, the last meeting, and I agree that we, if people do come to meetings, to workshops, and some of them are for it, some of them are against it. One of the people on planning mentioned had what the occupancy rate was on the existing B&amp;Bs, and evidently there is a form that you fill out when you pay your, I guess, your taxes on that, that you can check what your backseat rate is, but about half of them told do not fill that out, so it's not a requirement to fill it out, so we don't really know if the B&amp;B is here now, or 50% through, or 70, or 80, or 90. One thought was that we need to know that to know, make a rational decision, another planning commission said, well, no, we don't, it doesn't really matter, because if somebody wants a B&amp;B, they can put one in, it's just a, be a decision, it may work, it may not, it's just, it's their decision, whether, if the mark is not there, they'll find out, and they'll go out of business. I know I read the Democratic Gazette, Northwest Edition, and they're always having problems in the Bay Harbor, Spandau, Rogers, Bentonville, and they always hire consultants to come in, do a study, and then the, you know, they get the study, and they look at the occupancy rates, and what's happened the last year and that year, and they, they vote on it, because I don't guess we have money to do something like that, but it's kind of hard to make a decision, as Melissa said, without really knowing what the facts are, and like I said, you get, you have a meeting, workshop, and half of them are for it, and half of them are against it, and, you know, I just don't, I'm not sure planning is qualified to make that decision, you know, I mean, we, we could go one way and maybe right, and go the other way and maybe wrong, it's, I think it's gonna take more than just, you know, one group saying, yeah, let's do it this way, and let's do it another way.
Further discussion? Ms. Green?
I guess what I was saying about planning, I don't know, you know, he's, he's correct, half, half of the workshop wanted it, half didn't, you know, half the people that talked to me, you know, and, and I've had, in three years, I've had a lot, a lot of comments, both for and against, that, for me, I think basically the outlying people, they don't ever think about it, but I think there, there's a core bunch, and maybe it's more in R1 than R2, that are concerned. Now, for me, what I'm seeing is the town is filling up with residents. I, I think it's correcting itself, I think our laws are good, I don't know if maybe they need to be gone over, maybe some things deleted, maybe some things added, but, you know, personally, I don't see a problem, I have very mixed feelings about it one way or another, in fact, I'm pretty ambivalent about it, but I, I'm tired of this popping up, and popping up, and just, it's, it's such a hot topic, I just, you know, for me, I'm just looking for an answer.
Any further, Ms. McClung?
The trick to the deal is, is treating everyone equally, and, and that's what has to be done, and, and your guidelines are there, and, and you follow those, and, and what we have in place are fine, I believe that.
Okay.
I've been involved in this process for many years, on both sides of the fence, as a planning commissioner, as a city council person, and as a Realtor involved in the transactions. So it's always worked, people, if they, if they do what they're supposed to do, you know, they, it, the, the process works. So I think it's, I think it's fine as is.
Any further discussion? All right, we're going on then, thank y'all for that. Oh, I did want to make a note, too, that Ms. Kendrick's is not here, but she sent an email that she wanted read, but it's up to the council if you want me to read it or not.
Yes, please. In regards to what?
Regarding the CUPs, and it actually takes a vote of the council, the majority, because it's by the assembly, so-
Well, then why don't we save it until-
Because it's, this is a privilege to be able to read it instead of-
I'm gonna move that we read it.
Do I get a second?
Leave it or read it?
Read it.
All right, not hearing a second, then that fails. All right. The, so bringing this up to unfinished business, we have none, but I want to, I'm gonna kind of jump out of order here, we had during the commission and committee reports, we had a, an application by Mark Tozio, and Mark is here, I wanted everybody to recognize he was here, we're, you'll be voting on his application next week, or two weeks, so, I suggested he might show up, and if y'all have any questions afterwards, you can visit with him and, and talk with him, I had a nice conversation with him. So anyway, I just wanted to make that introduction to it.
Thank you.
So, agenda set, anybody got anything? Ms. Green, uh, Ms. Snyder, sorry.
I would like to add a discussion next, next meeting in regards to our city banners that go up like at the corner of Spring and Main, it apparently sounds like we really need to discuss something.
That's kind of an administrative thing, do you want to come into the office and talk about it, or do you want to set an ordinance on it?
I don't know what we need to do, that's why I figured a discussion would work, I can come in next morning.
Why don't you come into the office, and we can see what we did.
Okay, that'll work.
Anybody else? All right, council comments? Mr. Buford?
No comment.
Ms. Green?
Nope.
Ms. Snyder?
You bet. Okay, a week ago, not this Saturday, but the one before was, I don't know, I'm getting so tired, we did headstone cleaning out at the cemetery, they had asked, they had things in the paper, whatever, in regards to needing volunteers, for Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m., seven whole people showed up, including a couple of the cemetery commissioners, seven people, we worked for three hours, and we cleaned 121 headstones, and they look awesome. When you're looking at some of these really old headstones, and they're solid black, and you get this scrubbed off, and all of a sudden, there's a name, and it's an actual person, it gets ya. So, they are doing another one at the end of this month, Saturday, October 27th, at 9:00 a.m., you can call Pat Lohan, his number is, and you can get it on the website, his number is 479-244-5146. They will show you how to do it, it's not at all hard, my husband actually went along, and he's tall, so he got to do the tall ones, I have my crush back, so I sit on the ground and do the low ones, it works out for everybody, but I'm not kidding people, this is important, this is something community needs to be doing, because you have to use proper spray stuff on there, the proper stuff, because otherwise, like if you use bleach, like a lot of people have thought over the years, it tends to turn the marble orange, and there's another one that turns it green, and while that may be pretty, I don't think that's quite right, but, so my question to the mayor is, is it possible, when, at the end of a meeting, when you do your community announcements, you know, like Blues Weekend, Vet Weekend, so and so forth, could we possibly have a local event list for when there is stuff, this is obviously, this volunteering was obviously for locals, not for visitors, could you do something like that, so that locals are more likely to know about it?
If somebody would just call my office and let me know of events, this is not just for tourists, this is, when I read the events, this is for the city, so all we need to do-
Primarily, it seems to be visitors.
Mickey, please, all you need to do, and citizens out there, if you have a local event, it's to call my office, and we'll be glad to put it on the website, and to make it on the mayor's comments.
Okay, so people now know.
So we just need to be notified.
So please tell him, because the next one is 10:27. And that's it?
All right. Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. McClung?
No, sir.
All right. And this is under the mayor's comments, and some of these are for locals, and more for locals than visitors, because the locals watch the TV, 10/11 through the 14th, we have Multiverse Five and Dime Collective down at Main Stage, which is a great little theater- down at Main Stage, which is a great little theater production that they put out. Starts at 7:30 p.m. and 2:00 on Sunday. And then, that same weekend, this is an incredible event down at the farm, which is outside toward Butler Hollow, is a Hill Berry Music Festival, which is all day and all evenings. That's through the same weekend, the 11th through the 14th. The 12th and the 13th will have Music in the Park with Lindsey Lou and the Ben Miller Band, starting at 2:00 and another show at 4:00 in Basin Park. On the 13th, it's a gallery stroll from 6:00 to 9:00 in downtown galleries. And then, October the 18th through the 21st